After the Newtown convention shooting, the priest, my senior, Robert Weiss, was there at the fire station when the parents were collecting their children and conducted a lot of fun, and said, simply, "There are no words." And so with that, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for those precious children who should be lost in the worst.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May Ms. Dorchman be given a chill. Need a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent?
I need to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
For the motion by Ms. Powers and the second by Ms. Dorchman, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do we have any citizens' comments? Mr. Ryan? Thank you. State your name.
Randy Clark, speaking as a citizen today. I had a couple things. I'm going through, looking, starting to look through the school board agenda. One of the things that struck me was, I know as a contractor, I've worked for the school board before, and I've also been told that we can't pay you until the school board decides whether they approve this spending or not. With that in mind, I see in your consent agenda that as far as Christmas bonuses go, you're looking at approving them today to be paid December 19th. You paid them a month ago, so is there really anything to...
We didn't pay them a month ago.
That's what your, that's what your backup material, the request for board agenda says.
Those before the 12 month pause, CCA, excuse me, this month. I knew somebody was getting theirs this month.
Okay.
But also, let me just also tell you that we have to negotiate with unions, and we have to approve, and we have, we are the ability to do that out of the sunshine and shade. So there's plenty of things that might be on here that you're not permitted to as a public, first of the public, because you weren't allowed to attend that meeting. So...
Okay, and I can understand that. I'm just, I'm just looking at it from, you know, an economic point of view as a citizen. I want to see my, you know, our funds being used in the best way possible, and I think that involves discussion among you all as well. I mean, you know, if you don't get to discuss it until it's already spent, why bring it to you?
Well, the board did discuss that in the shade session, and that's where we get our approval when it comes to the pay.
Okay, all right, thank you. The other question was, is, and this has to do with the redistricting that I was reading about in the paper today. One of the things is, is we're looking at redistricting, La Canto High School looks kind of crowded. It looks like we added two portables there last year that according to the comments that are in the report, those two portables will be removed if we go through with the redistricting this year. Well, my question to that is, why didn't we redistrict last year and save that money? If we're looking at trying to save money, that's what...
Because Crystal River was under construction, and we didn't want to redistrict new students to Crystal River High School when we're in the middle of all the construction.
Okay, so...
Okay, now that we've completed, then we've got space to move it back to Crystal River.
And we, we understood what that expense was going to be, to put, set up two portables and take down two portables and...
Well, we don't have a choice on where to put our students.
They have portables at Crystal River High School that house students who were being displaced from the buildings that were under construction at the time. They were going to school on a construction site in a portable, so we still have the same portables, that just would have been here instead of there.
No, I mean, I'm just, I mean, the only issue I have is that we, we set two of them up in La Canto, and now we're going to take two of them down. And, you know, I mean, there's an expense to that. I mean, you know, we, we put them there and we took them down. I mean, that's, you know, I don't...
No, those were there prior to that.
Okay.
There was four, were there, no?
We didn't, we didn't remove all of them.
Okay, so it was just a matter of leaving a couple?
We left those there for the students until we get our approval.
Okay. I wasn't, I mean, that wasn't clear in the backup material. Thank you very much for clearing that up.
You're welcome. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I need to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. And now Ms. Susan Littman from the Early Learning Coalition, Child Passenger Safety Program.
Could it be a longer title? I tell you. Thank you, Mrs. Hamel, I am bored. I have some materials I'd just like to hand out a little bit. Can I start here? First of all, thank you for letting me come and present a little bit about the program that we have through Early Learning Coalition. Maybe you are aware, maybe you're not, that we did have a car seat safety program here in Citrus County for the past 10 years through the Health Department. And through budget cuts and things, it was eliminated in September of 2011. And the Early Learning Coalition did pick up the ball and agreed to house the program and give us some startup funds along with Kid Central. And we have a couple of things on the information sheet, just giving you a little background, you know, of what we had done in the last 10 years, is provide, first of all, car seat safety inspections for anybody in the community or anybody out of the community, it really didn't matter, and also new safe car seats for the neediest children in our county. You know, it really shouldn't matter on family income, children need to be transported safely. And in the last 10 years, I've provided over 4,000 safety seats, many of which were purchased through Department of Transportation funds, which were kind of county-specific or agency-specific, depending on how they ran the program. Well, in the last six months, they've come up with a new plan. They now have a statewide child passenger safety grant through the Occupant Protection Resource Center out of Gainesville. They will provide for our county brand-new safety seats, and I did bring one of my favorites along here. For children in our county, I can order 24 at a time, no cost, no shipping. They're available for the neediest children in our county. They do ask a $20 charge, which is really minimal when you have about an $80 car seat that's provided. The only thing is, they can only be ordered by people who are child passenger safety instructors, and there are only about 50 of us in the state. I am the only instructor in the county, actually, for about five counties around us. So I do serve other agencies and other people in the county. We do have about six or eight right now certified technicians in our county. Ingrid Ellis is here with me, she's our program manager. She and another gal in our office also are certified technicians, so we can assist families and educate them. We're not installers, that's for sure. We are educators, we provide parents with the education and training that they need to start from newborn on up, making sure their child is in an appropriate car seat, making sure that it's installed right. What you can see on the info sheet that I gave you, when we check car seats, we see four out of every five are not right. It's either the wrong seat for the child's age and weight, the seat's installed wrong, the seat's damaged, the seat's missing parts, and people just don't know what they don't know. I have parents who will say to me after an inspection, "I had no idea that my child was being transported that unsafely, that in a crash, my child could be injured or killed." And I don't want to see that happen to any child in this community. The program is not funded through Early Learning Coalition. It's funding, the funding for Early Learning Coalition is specific to their core services, which is early education, so all funds for the program are separate. We are asking community sponsors to help us keep this program going. We provide education for children through the hospitals, we provide education for all the children that we service through our childcare facilities, and the Teen Parent Program is served. I think about half of the girls in the program have received new car seats through the program this year, and I've just got an order of car seats, so I'm sure we'll finish them off this coming month or so. And those are just some of the issues that, that we face, is trying to keep this program funded. Now, I just wondered if you have any questions or any concerns as far as program management, how we're running the program, anything we offer?
How do you get the word out to prospective mothers, or pregnant mothers, I guess, that this service is available?
We have any number of sources, generally through our childcare providers, and we have 40, some in the county, through the WIC office, Healthy Start, Healthy Families. The Sheriff's Office has some of our flyers and brochures, and we have, our website has it on too. But I'd be happy for any other sources. You know, I go on Key TV regularly, I feel like I jump in there once every other week and try and get out the word. I'm on the School Health Advisory Committee, and Mrs. Powers and I have chatted over this a couple of times already, and she invited me to participate today. So I did provide another flyer that shows how parents go about getting the car seat, you know, calling us, make an appointment. It's not a drop-in service, and we're not a drive-through. They have to have the education in order to receive the car seat. And there's another brochure on booster seats, which kind of pertains to most of the children in the school district. It's probably 15, 20% of kids who should be in a car, a booster seat actually are.
And that's what you brought with you today?
I brought those along today. Now, this, this one particularly is for kids who are over two, they need to ride rear-facing till they're two, which is kind of a new thing. This seat will accommodate a child with that internal five-point harness up to 65 pounds, and then it converts to a high-back booster. There's a lot of versatility. Like I said, it's probably about an $80 car seat retail, and I really don't want to lose that opportunity to order those from the state at no cost for our children. So, you know, I'm asking if you have other organizations or service groups that you belong to, or as a school district, if you can help fund this program and keep it going in the county, I'd really appreciate it.
One of the places that you may find that there's an audience that might be a little untapped is our school advisory enhancement councils, which, as we've talked about, are really more than, we're trying to get them to start using it as an educational, for parents. And particularly at the elementary, they meet typically monthly during this time of the year, or at least they will be for the next month or two. They'll probably, each of the schools will have one that you can go to. And I know we can give you a list of, of those principals and some contact information, but you could be going there and even just doing that five or 10-minute presentation. Booster seats, I have a 13-year-old who will say he's going to be in therapy for years because we made him stay in that booster seat to the recommended time, which meant he was like nine.
Well, he's going to be glad you shared it.
I know. And all of his friends on Facebook right now are going, "Ooh." But, I mean, it is significant, that booster seat, and I think a lot of people don't realize how many children, young people, should be in those booster seats for a greater amount of time, and that education is vital.
We have a principals' meeting next Tuesday. I'll take your extra forms and give them out to each one of the principals. Is this your number, the 9939?
That's me.
And as you were saying, the age, you notice, think about a nine-year-old, that's true, and the height, 4 feet 9 inches, we don't think about someone that tall needing a booster seat. They do.
They do. And they don't yet be sitting in the front.
Not till they're 13, no, that's right.
I was going to recommend that you go to places where babies are born, like gynecologist's office, that sort of thing.
We have.
And also, maybe this guy or Chris can put something, a contact number on our website, actually send out to the principals and everything, so if someone forgets, they can look it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, facilities in construction, Mr. Burkhart. While he's coming forward, let me just say that I will be abstaining from voting pursuant to Florida statute 112.3143, as I perceive a potential conflict in this matter. It's right there. And I'll be on two and three.
Good afternoon, I'm here to ask approval of Phase One Crystal River High Change Order Number 16.
Can we take these in two parts? Do we have to take them separately, or can we take them together? I'd like to make a motion that we approve Phase One Crystal River High Change Order Number 16 and Number 15.
A motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Dorchman, do we have any further comments?
15, Phase Two, and 16, Phase One.
Okay, Phase Two, 15, and in a little blur, is this taking in used purchase order funds and putting back in ACA construction contract disbursed into subcontract, so it's just moving one place or two?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass this for zero. Ms. Randy, go.
Budget Amendment Number Three is what I have to present to you today. If you'll note on page two, the original budget was $231.9 million, for now at $235.4 million. Most of that increase is due to the special revenue funds, the grants that were approved after the beginning of the year. Page three, general fund. You see an increase in the fund balance of $50,000, that's primarily due to the Helio Grant. The revenue was $60,000, and this was just, the revenue didn't get posted as quickly as the expenditures, so the expense does, does equal the revenue on that. Food services, there is an increase in revenue of $2,838, that's due to the state supplement, breakfast supplement went up a little bit, and then a lunch supplement went down a little bit, so the net was $2,838.
So, Crystal River High School furniture budget increase, what did that cover?
On page four, capital projects, that was primarily due to library book detection system, drafting tables and computer workstations. And if you look back on page, as soon as I find it, page 18, part of that's a transfer in funds. You'll see a decrease in the remodeling and renovations of $50,000, but an increase of $118,000 in furniture fixtures and equipment, and that part of that was due to the direct purchasing program. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We do need a motion. A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Hale, do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon, I'd like to request your approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on the Golden Run.
Could we just have a minute to look it over, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it said Mr. Suzie is retiring to drop, and I don't want him to retire, so maybe we pull that one?
I'll make it.
Take a note.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you tell me he was retiring next year?
He's retiring tomorrow.
Maybe he said eventually. Maybe he said eventually. All right, I'll move approval of the instructional support recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Dorchman, a second by Ms. Powers. Any comments other than Mr. Suzie? All those in favor? Aye, carries five zero.
Mr. Bishop, thank you too for sending it out to us, it was nice just to get it and check, look it over last night.
Yes, we'll, we'll make a practice of sending that out shortly after 2:00 PM on the Monday prior to the board meeting, for your preview.
Thank you.
I'd also like to request the board's approval to approve the top of the pay scale bonuses based on contract days for administrative, non-union support, and professional technical for 2012, 2013.
I'll move approval of that, I'm sorry, I always thought somebody said so. Yeah, I'll move approval of the top of the scale bonus, bonus based on contract days for administrative, non-union support, and professional technical for 2012, 2013.
I'd like to comment if these are not Christmas bonuses.
Thank you.
That's what our builder just called them.
These are negotiated.
That is correct.
And these were negotiated per Florida statute. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Bradshaw, these were again negotiated per Florida statute in our negotiated allowance of shade session and then approved for now. Correct.
Could you clarify for all of us, administrative, who that applies to?
Administration, administrators who are on top of the pay scale.
But I mean, what person's like a principal in a, in a school is administrative? Is that, are we talking about principals? Because they're also construction.
They're administrative, though.
But they're called administrative for this purpose?
Okay.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I'd also like to request the board's approval of the top of the pay scale bonuses based on contract days for Teamsters support and professional technical for 2012, 2013.
A motion by Ms. Dorchman, a second by Ms. Powers, do we have any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Lastly, I'd like to request the board's approval to approve the top of the pay scale bonuses based on contract days for CCA instructional support and professional technical for 2012, 2013.
I'll move approval of CCEA instructional support and professional technical salary bonuses for, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the top of the scale bonus based on contract days for CCEA instructional support, professional, technical for 2012, 2013.
A motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. Any comments? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dixon.
Let the fun begin.
You're up, you're up, you're up.
Longest presentation.
Okay.
Now, he's found it.
There's a clotter's there, so...
Just double. Oh, that's where Mr. Gettys, Dr. Gettys is shaved wet.
Yeah.
Yeah. It jumped. So does that mean he looks 10 years older?
No, you know what, I was thinking, that was his old picture, was when he, he used to have that, so I think that was a picture from 10 years ago.
Okay, the attendance report that we do every year, we typically take a snapshot at the end of the calendar year, and then we bring that forward in like February or March. But this year, we, in order to work this out so that we could accomplish a potential rezoning before the beginning of the 13, 14 school year, and we start in October. So the report that you have in your backup material includes a comprehensive look basically at every level, elementary, middle, and high school, to see, you know, what changes in our attendance boundaries are necessary in order to equalize our enrollment across the schools. And typically, when schools get up, you know, around 100% utilization, then you, you need to start looking at rezoning. So the report you have also includes the report and a number of maps, which I'll go through. There are basically four areas. The first area is the North Citrus Elementary Area, which includes Central Ridge Elementary and Forest Ridge Elementary, which need to be reduced a little bit in enrollment. The second area is the Southeast Citrus Elementary Area, which is basically the IPS and, in that area, Floral City, which needs to have some additional students in order to make it more, have better economies of scale, if you will. And then the third area, which is the middle schools, is also included in the PowerPoint presentation, but we're not recommending at staff level to make changes to the middle school boundaries. The MGT consultant had suggested it in order to realign it with the high schools, but none of the middle schools are close to 100% utilization, so there's really no pressing need from a utility, or from a facility standpoint, to rezone the middle schools. Plus, when we actually looked at reducing the enrollment at Inverness Middle School to address some of the traffic issues there, we ended up having to move an area that was closer to Inverness Middle School to Citrus Springs Middle School, which is always problematic from a parent's standpoint, if you move a student who's actually closer to another school, so we try to avoid that. And that, and that's because of basically the geography of that area. And then the final area is the high schools, and basically the, the need to reduce the enrollment at La Canto High School, and move some of those students to Crystal River in concert with the construction project there. And I'll just go through the slide presentation. Also, it said some hard copy maps that you can look at if you, if you need them. Okay, the purpose or criteria is to comply with minimum class size requirements for elementary, middle, and high, to create student service areas that will allow for projected residential growth and to promote the efficient use of transportation. These are our current elementary school boundaries for the 11 elementary schools. You can see that, you know, Forest Ridge is the smallest geographic area because that's the highest concentration of students. The purpose of this is to move students from Central Ridge Elementary to Citrus Springs Elementary. We propose to move approximately 15 to 20, and the reason I approximate is because it's a moving target, and we're also assuming that fifth graders won't be moved. So if we move these geographic areas, the first year's going to be a lower number than the second year. So 15 to 20, maybe 15 the first year, may end up being 20 the second year. So 20 students... So 20 students from the Citrus Springs area from Central Ridge Elementary to Citrus Springs. And another area, 35 to 40 students from the Pine Ridge area from Central Ridge Elementary to Citrus Springs. And here you can see the map with the.
Now, we don't have a printed version of what you're showing us right now, do we?
Uh, no, ma'am. You don't have that in your, that's not in the report. That's actually a presentation that was created after the report went out. We'll have these on our website tomorrow. This is the area, the South Dunn Allen area, north of Country Club. Basically east of 41, north of Country Club, that whole area would go back to Citrus Springs Elementary. And then this area that's part of Pine Ridge that's, you know, previously in the Citrus Springs boundary would go back to Citrus Springs. And then the next area would be approximately 10 to 15 students from the North Citrus Hills area, north of County Road 46, Norbert Bryant Highway, from the Forest Ridge Elementary to Hernando Elementary. Now, we actually included in the, in this area, two areas, and I think we're going to want to move both of them in order to, we didn't know for sure. Forest Ridge is the most difficult to predict, you know, what the enrollment is going to be because of the, it's more transient and the numbers go up and down more. There, there's a higher degree of variability there. So I think we're going to propose, and what we're asking for today is not approval of these maps. It's just to take these to the public to get input and then we'll get a, we have a, we'll compile all of the information and feedback that we get. We'll bring that back to you at your public hearing and then you'll decide whether or not you want to make these changes or not. These are not in concrete. You can certainly approve some of them, not others, or approve all of them or none of them for that matter. But this area is, it abuts up to Beverly Hills. It's currently zoned for Forest Ridge and it would go to Hernando Elementary. And then the other area, that's an alternate area that I think we're going to want to move to, is the area right here, just to the south of this area.
What's the north-south road on, on the map of, in the orange area?
This road?
No, that's east-west. Is it north-south? Yes, that one.
It's Annapolis. And this is in the map that I'm showing you. Again, this abuts up to Beverly Hills and it's currently zoned for Forest Ridge. This is the area to the south. This abuts up to Terra Vista, which is to the east. And Annapolis over to Terra Vista, and Terra Vista is gated, so it's all, there's only one way in and one way out. So we wouldn't want to split it up and have it going to two different schools if we can avoid it because it's all one, one way in and one way out. And from a transportation standpoint, it doesn't make sense to send, you know, multiple buses into a gated community. So this is the alternate area two, which I would want to go ahead and take this map forward as well. And probably we would recommend, you know, we go ahead and move this area.
Terra Vista, is it in the blue area or the blue green area or?
It's right here. That's, well, basically.
To the left.
It's right here.
The left.
So it's currently for Forest Ridge. State Forest Ridge. And the next area is the Pleasant Grove Elementary area. This area, the Pleasant Grove IPS and Floral City area. We want to take this forward and get public comment, but we may want to postpone this until a future time. Ms. Kirby had wanted to do this initially and we think it's necessary, but we had hoped to, to also correlate it with some improvements to Floral City, which we haven't been able to complete yet, that we would like to make. But this is an area that does need to be rezoned and the, the objective here is to move some students basically from the southern end of Pleasant Grove and the southern end of IPS down to Floral City to make it more populated. And then we, in order to accomplish that, we would, we would also have to shift some students from Pleasant Grove over to IPS and then from IPS down to Floral City. So again, we want to take these maps forward and get public input on this, but, you know, this is an area that we may, you may choose to postpone rezoning. But we do want to go ahead and move forward with it now in case, in case you decide you want to do it. And we also want to get public input to see if there's any issues out there that we're not aware of.
Well, let me just, can I address this one because this is where I live? My house is on this map to move. Does the boundaries, at least as far as I know, have never been changed as long as I've lived in my house for 28 years? So I'm one of the worlds, it's the next block that would go the other direction. Part of that has been caused, and Mike, you probably have more knowledge about this than me, the Highlands has changed in the demographics. But now the Highlands houses are all going back on the market again. And I, my fear is, at one point, we had IPS enrollment exceeding 900 students, 859. It's really, really high. We rezoned it and that was one, one day, my house was, you could go to Floral City or IPS and they moved the boundary more towards Floral City because, or the other way around, I guess, because IPS had really outgrown itself. So I don't want to jeopardize IPS. Because that, there's no building going on in that whole, in that whole area. It's all a lot of people who are buying existing houses, same thing in Floral City. And we start, we start changing zones and now we have parents moving into existing houses because they're less expensive. And that population for IPS, those kids all grew up. Their parents still live there. We all live there. Our kids grew up, moved away. So it's, it's like, it's like Beverly Hills, that you're going to have a second wave of families coming in. Floral City is so tenuous with not, with us not really being able to afford, I would think it's time to do all the renovations that are necessary. I can't see why, how we could justify moving a single other student down there that would cause us to spend billions of dollars that we don't have right now. I mean, the beauty of that school is that has actually been under-enrolled and we haven't had to do some of the things that we should have done had we had the existing money. So I think the Floral City issue should really be moot point at this time until we even have the funds to fix that school. And rather than get people upset.
That's why I said you might want to just postpone this because we are looking at funding, other alternative funding for sewer plants and some things like that.
Before you go out to the public and propose this as an idea, you know, one of the, the, you want to get people upset or emotional when you're talking about moving their school. So I would not introduce that idea to the public until we were sure that we could do it, even if we decided not to. But if we can, there's no sense in, in bringing that up and having people upset about it when it's not realistic at this time. That's just my opinion.
Well, along those lines, then I'd like to go back to, to Citrus Springs, Central Ridge. And my question is, is on our backup here, it shows that there's approximately, we're talking about 35 to 50 students. And I know I've asked you this question before, but I think the other board members should know. And approximately how many students going to Central Ridge right now are out of zone?
Well, I actually have that. Let's see here. Central Ridge currently approved coming in is 69.
69?
Yeah.
And I know that in talking to the principal, I believe there's about 20 of those are staff students. So we're talking about almost the same number of out of zones there that we're talking about zoning. I'm concerned to rezone for, and basically taking away those that live in that community now, that some will have bought in Pine Ridge, for example, because that's going to be the bulk of it, in order, in essence, to make space for people that are out of zone.
And I understand that, but, I mean, if you look at that particular school, for example, you have 69 approved coming in, 92 approved going, wait a minute.
I think it's the reverse of that.
Yes, reverse of that.
So it's actually even larger. It's almost 100 students that are out of zone there.
But the board has approved criteria for attending an out of zone school. In other words, you've set policy on that and you've said that as long as you meet these criteria and there's space in that school for you, that you're going to approve that.
But we're saying there's not space because we're making, we're having to rezone approximately 50 students out of one area when we're putting 92, and 92 is really closer to 70 because I'm saying I'm going to count for staff students going there. That means that we, we're still zoning, we've got more out of zones there than we're talking about zoning away from there.
There's 69 approved to come in. There's 779 students there. And for example, at IPS, it's even higher, but as a district, we're about 10%. We're a lot lower than, say, Marion County School District in terms of the number of students that tend.
I don't think though our, our out of zone policy was intended that we would rezone and redistrict in order to accommodate out of zones. And I have trouble, I have, this board member has trouble saying that I'm going to rezone 50 students currently in order to make sure that there's room for out of zones.
We, yeah, we don't have open enrollment, so I, I, and we've had this issue come up before years ago, rock pressure, same issue, where there's about 100 kids that were going to be transferred to another school. Those parents were very vocal and say, I see those parents that live on the other side of the county lining up in front of the school every day and drop their kids off. And you're going to rezone my students so that they can drive their kids to school and they're out of zone? And we said, you're right, we're not doing that.
And just for two, two disclosures. One, my, my daughter goes to that school. I was rezoned out of Citrus Springs when my son was there.
I remember.
And really, yes, you do. We became good friends during that conversation. And that same group is the group that we rezoned out of Citrus Springs, rezoned to Central Ridge. Now, my daughter's going to be grandfathered in because she's going to be in fifth grade, so it really is not, it does not affect me. But now we're going to say to those same very parents, we're going to rezone you back to Citrus Springs in order to make room for, for people that are out of zone. So I'm, I just don't think that's probably good for us to put something out that, as a board. If we're not willing to support that as a board, that decision this year, then I don't know that we really want to put that map out.
I think it's a very valid point too, because I don't know if I had a child and.
Yeah, we can look at that, but just keep in mind that the long-term goal is to move, I think we were looking at moving some students, more students from Forest Ridge up to Central Ridge and splitting Beverly Hills into.
But we're already, right now, you've got Forest Ridge, you're at 96% capacity. But at Central Ridge, you're at 96% capacity as well. So you're still shuffling the same percentage in there.
Right. We could hold off on, on doing a Central Ridge if, if you choose to do that and.
Well, I think we're talking at this point, aren't we, if you're not doing any, if you potentially aren't doing those two, then is it, do we really move forward with any elementary boundary change?
Are we seeing any growth at the elementary school? Very slight.
Pretty flat, yeah. It's pretty flat.
Yeah. You know, the problem is, we rezoned.
It's where they're shuffling because of the transient, I think of it, it's.
We tend to rezon the same pockets of people, which I've said this before, if they go this way, they go that way, they go this way because they're on the fringes of those boundaries. And until we have a period where we have a high growth in a certain area where we're really over capacity, if we're just shu, shu, you know, juggling 25 or 30 kids, that's a lot of angst for small amount of room. It's basically like, you know, one classroom at fifth grade level.
And Mr. Dixon, and I, this is with tremendous respect for what you do. We know this area is the most challenging area in our district because every one of Citrus Springs, Central Ridge, Forest Ridge has either a transient issue or it's one of the most popular areas right now of growth. And it's why the purchase of a property in, in Pine Ridge area makes a lot of sense. Because as we know, there are vacant homes there and as those homes get occupied again, that's going to continue to put strain on all three of those schools at the same time, which is in essence what happened, why this board made the appropriate decision to, to build Central Ridge in the first place. I think that's what's happening. I think we're just going to keep pushing up and we're going to move this street over to here and like you said, that street's going to come back.
Until we know what the trend is in building, I mean, I, I keep hearing 2015 is the year of, you know, economic recovery and things are starting to sell and turn around. Until we see a trend like we had in the past where we built three elementary schools to service that, you know, northwest corner of the county, we don't really know where the students are going to end up. And, and it, you know, to rezone with minimal effect because we don't have any real severe problem, our problems are minimal, I think. And they can be adjusted by denial of some of these out of zones. How many out of zones are at Pleasant Grove? Is there a positive or negative influx of students?
Pleasant Grove has 103 coming in.
And how many going out?
61.
So you have a positive of 40, which is again, two classrooms. And your proposals to Pleasant Grove rezoning is somewhere around 35 students, was I right?
Well, we have two different areas from Pleasant Grove going, one going to Floral City and one going to IPS. But there again, I, I suggested that we may want to postpone that anyway until, we looked at everything and there's two schools of thought for doing this. And in Marion County, they do little pieces every year. They do, they do a rezoning every year. And as they grow, they take like one or two streets and move it over to the next school, so it's constant. You know, in other places, you know, where they don't have as much growth, they just wait until it's absolutely critical and then do it. You know, we, we try to do something in between here, so. But we certainly, you know, can postpone the southwest or southeast part of the county until we firm up what we're going to do with Floral City. And then we could also postpone doing anything with Central Ridge. Do you want to postpone Forest Ridge?
I don't know what we're gaining when we're really, again, talking about, you know, Central Ridge is 96 to 99% occupancy. Forest Ridge is 96 to 97% utilization. And Citrus Springs, there, you know, there's, that's where there's some room there. And we know that that has an infrastructure, as we've always used for, as there was a buildup of students, we kind of housed them there because of the portable, the options of portables there. I don't think, again, that plan is probably going to change. So I'm not sure that right now, I, I really think maybe with elementary as a whole, we should just hold off. I'm not saying that's necessarily with the next conversation you're going to have, but I, I think with elementary, I don't know that we're gaining enough to go through it.
I think we need to wait another year and see if there's any specific trends in population in Citrus County. See if we have growth or any particular pockets. And also, again, Citrus Springs Elementary School, I remember at one point 1,100 students.
Yes, I was there.
1,100. Now, now we're talking about moving kids to that school.
And Mr. Mullin, we appreciate it because your department was constantly trying to provide services to house the bodies and you did an excellent job.
It's funny how James.
Yeah. But I do think your thinking and your, and the approach that you're taking is good for us to, as a board, to have seen that thought. And I tend to agree with, I think, some of the, the general thinking if that were the case. I just don't think this.
Trust me, I'm fine with not doing it. Bring it to you so you see the whole picture.
And are you also saying we have to consider the out of zone request? Maybe review that.
Well, I think.
That's how the school monitors their enrollment, determines their enrollment.
And I think, Mr. Dixon, your department has made some very good internal controls with that. And it's not as simple as you know Joe and Joey and you're going to get into that school.
No, we give them a report at the beginning of the year that has the enrollment, the projected enrollment, the percentage of out of zones from the previous year and the projected percentage for the current year so that they can gauge how many they need to, to expect. And if they have more than that, and even the ones that have historically approved, a lot of them have, have slowed down quite a bit on them. We'll also ask principals sometimes to relook at some that they denied. We're starting to have issues with overcrowded at one school. We did that last year. We called a couple of schools. We went over kindergarten, asked them to relook at some. So it helped us balance out without having to add units or weeks of.
Because you may have one school where there's, there's room at the second grade and you would take that because of that case. But at the other school, it'd be create, we'd have to create a whole other classroom almost. And so it's, it makes sense to then.
The Chuck's Department's done a good job.
It's extremely more complex with, with classroom size and men. It's extremely more complex with classroom size amendment now with that.
So, what I would like to do is go ahead and just give you a kind of a briefing on the middle school, even though we're not gonna do that, so you can see, you know, if we did it, what we would do, and then, this is probably similar to what we will do in a couple of years or so. But the first one is to move approximately sixty to sixty-five students from Citrus Springs to Crystal River Middle. This was an MGT recommendation, again, to align with the high school. And this is the area that would go from Citrus Springs to Crystal River Middle. It's not all of the area that is gonna be proposed for the high school, but it's a good portion of it. And then the next would be fifty to fifty-five students from Hernando area, from Embryness Middle to Citrus Springs Middle. And you can see that to get fifty-five students, this is a huge area, and it's actually moving an area that's closer, a lot closer to Embryness Middle, so that would be problematic, I think. And then, this is an area that we will propose to go ahead and do this year, as well as the high school has the same area. This is an area that is, can't see it real well on this map, but it's, it's actually just a Schruthner's area. And this is both the middle school and the high school, it's an area that's on Cardinal Lane, it's just north of Sugar Mill Woods. But basically, it's zoned for La Canto, but you have to drive all the way through, this road doesn't come through. And you basically have to go through an area that's zoned for Crystal River to get to it. So, this would only affect one student in the high school, we could grandfather that student in, but it was just a mistake, basically, when they drew the map, because it shouldn't be, since it's all connected, it should be the same school. So it would be going to Crystal River Middle and Crystal River High.
It's more about cleaning up the map than...
Yeah, that's one small mistake that we noted when we looked at everything, and it was brought to our attention from Transportation Department.
As a long-term thought, you know, Crystal River Middle has always been, I think of recent years, that where the area around it that it's typically serviced, and it's been a declining enrollment, and the other outlining schools have tended to have, have taken on that burden. As, God willing, the recovery takes place in various recoveries, do we see any difference in that trending? Is that still a transient? Because that, the numbers there continue to seem to be, you know, not necessarily going in a positive direction. And that's one of those outlining schools that we almost have to create a population going there.
Well, I think we will eventually need to realign with the high school boundary and increase the, because it's a big school. Crystal River Middle School's bigger than Citrus Springs Middle School, quite a bit bigger in terms of student station. So, in order to fill it up, you know, we're gonna eventually have to realign it. But until we need to reduce the enrollment at Citrus Springs, there's really no benefit.
As that becomes necessary, that idea would be to kind of realign that into that.
Then we realign it. Okay, and finally, the high school boundary, this is the current high school map, you can see Citrus High and La Canto and Crystal River, La Canto being the green, Crystal River the blue. And the proposal here is to move approximately a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty students from Citrus Springs area, from La Canto High to Crystal River High. And, you know, this would probably result in about a hundred and sixty students in year three, because it's a pretty good-sized area, and we're assuming, again, that all of the seniors or the juniors, this year's juniors are gonna be grandfathered in, if you choose to do that. So this is the area here.
And how many students are out of zone in La Canto?
Canto High School. Now, keep in mind, some of them were IB, Art Academy IB.
I know, but we're doing that on...
Are those considered out-of-zone, though?
Yes.
They are class, is there any way to classify those for us in the future differently?
Well, they're coded, based on the educational program, because that's an approved, board-approved criteria. But La Canto has two-hundred-and-thirteen approved to go in, two-hundred-and-two out.
Where do they two have to go?
They go to either...
Probably I, AES, or Healthycan.
Well, actually, they don't go to AES, because...
Oh, that's right, because there's still some, so it would be Healthycan.
So they go to either Crystal River or Citrus.
Really? So it's almost a break-even?
It's almost a break-even.
Oh, I was surprised.
But that's true for all three of them, so...
For disclosure to the public and the board, I am also rezoned in this, from La Canto to Crystal River High. But I will tell you first, as a parent, that would be wonderful, I think that's gonna be a great, and I'll talk more about how amazing I think that school, that campus is, and kudos to this board. But I think that, looking at this, and you know, Mr. Dixon, I have been critical in the past, as I continue to probably will be with scrutinizing the boundaries, and I think this, though, makes a very logical sense. It was along the lines completely of what MGT study suggested as well. And I think there's, you know, there is merit to the thinking as far as a location, it's kind of logical. Someone, if they were looking in an area, can say, "Well, this is X, you know, west of El Cam, for example, it's a very obvious line, definitive line, that El Cam that goes up again." So someone can, you know, they're not kind of going, "Oh, now that street's this."
So it's closer almost to Crystal River High School?
Well, it is, yeah, because the new entrance goes to four-ninety-five, Turkey Oak, four-ninety-five and down, it's just more convenient to go to Crystal River.
Is there, have we, was, I know you guys are always doing analysis of bus transportation and how it affects these. Was there any nominal difference, one way or the other, in this rezoning as far as transportation cost?
They just, the transportation issue, as long as we used a main road and we didn't create any pockets where the bus would have to go, you know, pick up a, pick, a bus stop, you know, into an isolated area, it's, you know, there are no transportation issues, you know, that would make it.
We don't know if it's a savings or a cost there, till they reroute.
And how do these align with the middle school boundaries? Would we be taking that area there and setting up in different directions?
Well, there's, the school of thought on that is that, you know, based on what MGT said, was that parents like to, and students like to know, you know, what their progression is from elementary to high school. You know, and it, but there's no way that we can tell someone that when they start pre-K at X elementary school, that they're gonna end up in twelfth grade at X high school, because things just change too much, too rapidly, to make that promise. You know, we can try, we try to keep them in one school, like when they go, when they start in pre-K, get through fifth grade, and then start in middle school, and get through middle school, and they start in high school, and get through high school. But as far as aligning them so that there's a perfect correlation between the middle schools and the high schools, we're gonna have to do that incrementally, and we're not gonna be...
Does this not somewhat better make, right now, I know it's Citrus Springs Middle, you go to three different schools. If you go to Citrus Springs Middle, you, depending on where you are, you're gonna go to Citrus High, La Canto, or Crystal River.
So we need to build a high school in Citrus Springs, is that what you're recommending?
But, so I think in some ways, though, this helps modify that, that there was less going in three directions and more going in, I think, simply two directions.
Yes, there's more going now, too, it's a better split.
It's a better split, than, so in some ways, you are improving on that.
Improving it. So, we're moving in the right direction, and then eventually, when we rezon the middle schools, we'll adjust more of them to go over from Citrus Springs to Crystal River Middle School when we do that. But there's no point in doing that now, because the capacity, there's no capacity issue at any of the middle schools. If there was a capacity issue at Citrus Springs Middle School, it would be appropriate to go around and do that. So what, do you wanna just go forward with the high school?
Does this board have trouble with the fact of if we can just not do elementary zoning then this year, and suspend that this year? And...
Do we send middle school, too?
And then middle, with the exception of that one little, with that one little piece? That one little thing, and then just, and then just go with the high school?
Okay, and we'll, and we'll keep the middle school and the elementary school, you know, look at it again.
There's a meeting on Thursday, and I believe, Ms. Bryant, you asked if I could attend that, and I'd be happy as a board member to have your back. Yes, you have that first meeting.
We've got three meetings scheduled, so we're just gonna do the high school at all three meetings? Because we probably should have all three meetings, since we've already put that. So we will go ahead and just have, there may not be that much interest in, like at Citrus High School, talking about La Canto, but we probably still should have that meeting, and then see if we need to...
Unless, the other question I was gonna say is, do you move the IPS meeting to Floral, to Forest Ridge or someplace where it's also some of those, I'm thinking, where, is there another location where those students might be affected to facilitate that?
The first meeting is at this Thursday, Crystal River High School. The second meeting is at Citrus Springs Middle School, and those, a lot of those students are affected, because they're currently in the middle school, going to the high school next year. So there will be some students at Citrus Springs Middle School who are affected. Now, the third meeting's at Citrus High School, so we could cancel the third.
We have time to do, we have time to cancel that.
We have time to cancel that, okay. So we will just do the two meetings, we'll do the first meeting at Crystal River High School, second meeting at Citrus Springs Middle School, and then not have a third meeting unless we need to.
All right. Sounds like plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
So do we need to vote on, should we...
It says accept, review and accept.
Do you, Mr. Brech, do we need to, I don't mind making mine a motion, could you?
Nothing's really going into effect, we asked there, but he just wanted, it was more for guidance.
Consent.
Down.
So they'll vote it to public here.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Walker, budget update.
So if you see, as we had told you all last month, we are about two-hundred students down, or about two-hundred-and-forty-six on the waiting. And then, if you see, the school taxable value has a decrease of two-point-two million, that is due to the Duke energy. That is the, that property was, the school taxable value of that property out there was...
Just one, two billion, not one.
Billion, did I say million? I'm sorry, billion. And then if you come down to the FEFP detail, essentially, it's a net change of reduced funding of about six-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars, with the base funding going down about eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. We did get a declining enrollment supplement of a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, based on those students that were less than what we had originally budgeted. Sparsity went up about seventy thousand, that was based on the taxable value that went down. Safe Schools only down eleven hundred, Reading Instruction ninety-six hundred, instructional materials was down about eighty-eight hundred dollars. Transportation actually went up about twelve-five, and the virtual education contribution was taken away, because we don't do that program. So all, and then class size reduction was down about a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. So essentially, we were down about one-point-six million dollars at the third calculation as compared to the second calculation. And that's a combination now of the Duke reduction and the actual FTE reduction.
How much was for each?
It's about seven-hundred, if you look at the discretionary local effort, about seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand, that's about what we lost due to Duke energy, because that's what the state would not reimburse us. It reimburses about five-point-three million, is what it came out to be.
Okay, so if, for some reason during the course of the school year, before the next tax rolls are released, Duke negotiates some sort of settlement with somebody?
Correct.
And they pay a all or a portion of it, then we pay that back?
You would have to then analyze what that, we can't double-dip.
Right.
So we would have to look at how much goes against what they reimburse us, that five-point-three million. They would then do another calculation, much like they did here, and then they would adjust our payment to us.
Okay, and then also, can you tell me, how, what is one FTE, how much in dollars is one FTE?
On the base funding, it's about thirty-six hundred dollars.
So is that, when they say one FTE, especially when we have this one-sixth FTE penalty for students who don't pass it in a course exam, it would be one-sixth of the thirty-five we need to?
Correct.
Even though we're funding students at one-fourth of an FTE, because they have four teachers, not, four plus is not six?
Fourteen, but annually, it's actually eight classes.
Eight, right, well, I'm seeing different, so...
But, and that was a question, though, I wondered, is the FTE based on the full weighted, I mean, there's the FTE amount at the state?
It's the weighted, the way you, the way that the calculation works is you got your weighted FTE times your base student allocation, times your district cost differential.
And is, and so that's my question, so is that amount, though?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking him, is it gonna be just the base student allocation?
Is it based on the student, base student allocation, Matt, or is it based on the full FTE?
The full FTE.
So it's even more?
It could be, basically, if it's a cred student, a two-fifty-four, yes, it would be, or if it's a, if it's a workforce, a vocational student, it'd be less, because they're less than one, so that's, it's just a good round number, that's the base student allocation, it's about thirty-six hundred, and it's there, it goes from there, so. But it's based on the weighted. So, in essence, we are down in FTE around nine-hundred thousand, and the Duke was about seven-hundred thousand, so that's about what it comes out to be. So I just wanna remind you that we will have our workshop on the twenty-eighth, is it?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. Which is the Tuesday after what we were supposed to, and then we'll start doing the budget workshop for the FY fourteen year. We'll start with the calendar, and start with what we forecast the year-end to be, and what the forecast, doing some, certainly some forecasting for next year's revenue, and what we anticipate, the budget reductions and the need for that.
Mr. Kennedy, excuse me, would this be a good time to bring up?
I was just gonna say, thank you, but go ahead, Ms....
Well, because we have representatives that are, I never want to put them on the spot, but this is... It's a matter of information, because I'm not sure all of us, including myself, even understand this FTE penalty, or the not being, not being paid FTE until the student takes in a course exam, passes it. One of the reasons why we were able to recover the money that Duke didn't pay is because of the equalization formula, which says that all schools be funded on an equitable basis, regardless of the demographics, the tax rolls, whatever. So there's no rich school, poor school.
For the required local effort only, not the prior adjustment or the supplemental, so it just makes a real...
Okay, but required local effort is also part of your FTE.
That's correct.
So how can there be a law that says, "Oh, except for performance, now it's no longer gonna be an equalization formula, an equalization funding, it's going to be non-equalization, it's gonna be based on performance," which seems to me as in direct conflict with the law that states that it must be an equalization of funding from school to school, state to state, and that only makes sense because that's what we believe about public education, in that we don't, we don't ask the local taxpayer to decide how much school taxes are likely to do in Chicago and other places, where you do have rich school, poor schools. So, so I, I really struggle with this whole thing anyway, as far as, as far as many levels. But this Duke energy thing really made me think about this in a different way as well. Do you see like a conflict here, or...
Oh, absolutely, it's paying you for students, and then it takes it away if they don't perform.
Right.
And the reason, the variables for that may be many, that we may not even have control over as to why they did perform the way they did, so now they take it away from you, so, and as since you could be losing, I think we looked at this past year with the math EOC, I believe, Mr. Brech, was like three or four hundred thousand dollars that we've been...
And as it phases in, I think we're to, we've looked at it being, it could potentially be into the million.
Oh, absolutely.
Over the million.
But, but that is in direct conflict with the FEFP funding formula and that law, so somewhere along the line here, I see a big lawsuit.
Well, it definitely sounds like it certainly puts a case together for one.
Yeah.
And I would think, this is where we go back to Florida School Board Association.
What?
It's in contrast of each other.
Yeah, I mean, the, one is in direct violation of the other, so you would think that...
And is one in statute and one in, um...
I think they're all in statute.
I didn't know if the other one, but the other has, is in constitution, is part of the constitution, refers back to...
Well, and part of this is the, you know, the duty to have...
Right, that was what I wondered.
But when we looked up all these, all these statutes about the funding, it talks very specifically... specifically about, there has to be an equalization. That's the whole point of how, and even if it, even if you lose money during the year because of the like Duke, we still are, the state's obligated to equalize our funding.
We, I think that was established in 1973, that they understood the equalization of funding.
The, you know, we are all members of this Florida School Board Association, and I would be, and I was just gonna say, Ms. Deutschman, I would really encourage you to make sure that the, that they are aware that I think they, that they're really busy.
I'm sure they're goofy, but.
Yeah, I don't know that I would count on that. When have you ever counted on that?
Has really, has really, you know, every time you're faced with a, with a challenge, you learn more than you thought you, you know, that you already knew, and you learn things new and things.
I think it's a valid point, though. In one case, and, and I, I mean, we, all of us privately may know what the agenda behind some of that is, but I do think that that creates a legal challenge.
Yeah, interesting. So, very happy.
Um, but Ms. Bryant, to go back to you, I, we were talking about the 29th, and, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about Crystal River High and my recent visits there. But we're going to be going to Citrus Springs Middle to see the iPads. Would really, probably, since we're on the road, be a good opportunity to go and just kind of then quickly come either before or after, get over to Crystal River High, since we're all gonna be traveling in the sunshine anyway, to see the Crystal River High's face at this point because.
It's gorgeous.
It's the media center.
It's gorgeous.
At the media center. And they moved in, and again, I don't, they'll, I'll talk more about it. But it's, it really, I think, would be valuable for us to go see, and have us together, to be able to talk together in that. So the, I think the question is, is the agenda for that day of accomplishing those two visits, and then we know how important the time that you need for us to do when it comes to the budget.
Oh, so we're meeting about the budget later on that.
And we're meeting with the budget. We're doing a road trip in the budget, so.
And we're gonna talk about $720,000, how we're going to mitigate that?
We, we talked about that last board meeting.
And the $6 million, I think, is where you're talking.
Well, we didn't know how much it was gonna be.
Right, I mean, I can bring that back to you, we can go.
I think, I think that would be essential.
I think all those pictures of, of where, the direction we're gonna have to start talking. Because that's what I think you're trying to do, is establish the road that we're gonna need to travel on for the budget.
Correct. We're gonna try to put some stones together for the Capitol Walkway.
So now that we know that we have been able to recover from a loss of the tax revenue, is it still in our best interest to stay in this lawsuit as a, I guess we're named party as a defendant in this one? We've joined in.
There's been verified motions to intervene into the lawsuit. There's no order has been signed by the court yet because Judge Thomas recused herself from the case, and I haven't seen an order that has appointed a judge to have the multiple hearings that are going on. And so once that order is entered, then I would, at that time, call a shade meeting, attorney-client shade meeting, have Mr. Cloud come over and be able to explain things, the litigation, and everything in much more detail to you at that point in time.
Okay, but I guess my question still remains, my original question, my first kind of review to this, at what point does it become the, you know, the diminishing returns in that we are currently standing on net loss of $720,000, and we've already committed $175,000?
We still had another.
About 2.5.
Right, we still got the capital.
Oh, the cap, okay.
And it's not gonna, it's not gonna go away. And I, I don't wanna talk about any type of negotiations or anything, but this is gonna be a long walk.
I understand that, but we're, but we're not, we're a taxing authority, we're not a tax assessing authority. So it really is out of our hands. We receive the taxes that are assessed by, by the county, which we're not a part of. We have no authority or no responsibility for what they do. We just receive the taxes as a result of their work. So again, I want to express my concern about funding what is their responsibility and their, their job. And I read in the paper yesterday, the day before, that Jeff Green said, yes, we're gonna spend $720,000 to look at our assessment process. And was that part of the money that we've committed? That was one of the questions that we had. That was one of the questions a lot of the public asked at that meeting that we had with the joint meeting, was the money that we committed to the lawsuit going to be spent on this reassessment process?
I think the students, uh, still are submitting to the attorney.
Yeah, I think this board has, has tried to make that clear and.
Have you had a conversation with anybody at the county to clarify that and make sure that that's understanding and agreement?
I've had a conversation with the attorneys for.
Okay, good. They understand. Let us know if they agree.
Doesn't mean that they.
I appreciate it.
But again, what I would also suggest is that, that once the court interferes or you have a shade session, a lot is being discussed in.
I think a lot of questions seem to be discussed in shades.
And that way you can ask multiple questions on multiple, you know, topics without, you know, without jeopardizing and ongoing, be on litigation. If y'all would do that, I would appreciate it.
The only, the, and I appreciate, Ms. Deutschman, you, you know, the concerns that you bring up, as, as far as how much skin do we, for lack of a term, maybe have in the game. I still go by that something that still has, I don't, completely been talked about, and that is because of the equalization law. At this point, next year, regardless of whether the board of county commissioners somehow finds a way to cut everything and keep their costs no more than what they are this year, or reduce them to, in order to equal, to offset Duke's, the state will require that taxes or the millage rate is increased in order to compensate for the school system. And so it would be, I think we've kind of roughed, roughly had conversations that for $100,000 to make up that difference, it's probably going to be for $100,000 taxable value, at least a hundred or more dollars for the average taxpayer per hundred thousand of value that they have, that will, will go up at this point regardless of whether we are in the lawsuit.
We'll have to see what the property appraiser values the school taxable value. Once again, if he values it at, say, what he did this year, we're gonna have to go through the same motion again next year because if progress hasn't disposed of their lawsuit, and they once again challenge that value.
But that is the difference.
Right, essentially then, if the, if the value is set lower, you know, to gain the same amount of dollars, you're gonna have to raise the millage rate, yes.
But you have the millage rate for this, most of the state is about the same. It varies very little. You go from one county to another, other than those 10, I think, counties that exceed the 95 percent, you only have to raise 95 percent locally. You don't have to go 98 or 99. And there's certain counties that their millage rate was lower so that they wouldn't raise more than 95 percent. The rest of us are all plus or minus about 25 or less?
Yeah, we do 96.
No, but in as far as our millage rate compared to all the other millage rates.
Oh, they're roughly.
No, it's not, I'm not talking about us, local, I'm talking about.
The local required effort.
The local required effort cannot exceed 95 percent of your entire budget.
Right.
And Monroe County, Collier County, some of those that have very high property value would exceed that if they use the same millage rate that we use.
Yes.
At the same time, if our property tax, if our, our tax rolls go down, I don't think you're gonna see a significant increase in our millage rate because we are also equalized with all the other counties having very similar millage rate. So that we would get more from the state than we get now, but the local required effort would actually go down then.
And I, and I think that would be something that would be important for us to, as we move forward, to see though, what, what the difference it will put us.
We don't know, but you can look, you can look, and I, I forget where on the stuff.
Or at least, I mean, to give an idea of what potentially.
You mean, we'll, we'll, we'll start giving an idea when they give the.
Because the challenge that I have is that those taxpayers, we, our taxing authority is going to be the largest beneficiary of, um, of this, of the taxing amount for, uh, chain, in, of the, in, the, of the effect of the Duke energy. We will be the, the largest tax authority affected by that, that will ultimately have to be passed on to, to the adlorn taxpayer.
I would think the county would be.
Yeah, the county would be.
We're, but we, we're, that's what I'm saying, we're not gonna have to.
Essentially, we're gonna get, we're gonna get funded by the state.
Regardless.
The county is the one that's directly more impacted than what we are.
But I thought our millage rate, they will have to adjust.
It is through the legislative process, and most likely it may go up, but the state, if this, depending on how much the state wants to kick in for additional funding. I mean, that's gonna be the million dollar question. What's the property value? What's the assessment?
But you add to that, on top of that, than what our capital, um, that we're asking for. And it's still, I would think, close to anywhere from a half to a full mil.
Remember, we lost the quarter, so that's gone. We can only do 1.5 on the capital, so that doesn't change.
We're not, and they, they can't, they don't set our millage rate in Citrus County. Because again, you would say, well, Citrus County can pay, you know, five mils, and, you know, Leon County, well, we're only gonna, because I, I'm a big powerful senator, we're only gonna do two mils in Leon. I don't work like that. They're all basically around 5.2, 5.3 mils. So if we lose our tax base, our millage for our taxpayers doesn't change. Our required local effort goes down, and the amount of state funds goes up. And we've seen that increase over time, that the local required effort for everybody has gone up across the state.
Right.
As the state has lost their revenue sources.
Well, the belief to push more local control down to.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, it's the same rationale of the, of the equalization of, of funding is also the equalization of burden, that we have the, our, our taxpayers don't have any more burden than the, than the taxpayers from another county. So that whole same belief goes back also to that 1/6 FTE, and also the reason why we got that money funding. It's all there for a reason. It's equitable, equal, so that everybody, every school is funded at the same level. And there's a reason for that. That's belief about public education, and what we believe in Florida about funding public education. It doesn't matter if your school's full of minority students, or full of, of wealthy students of advantage. They're all funded at the same amount.
All the students get the same opportunity.
Same amount, same opportunity. Equal opportunity is what we believe in this country. So now we start juggling with that based on whether the student passed a test, or whether, you know, Duke decided not to pay. That's not how this has been funded for the last 150 years. So.
It's like it's underbodied the whole system if you do that.
The belief that there's an equitable opportunity for every student because they have the same funding that any other student in Florida receives regardless of the nature of their abilities, their disabilities, their wealth, their poverty, their parents are home or not at home, you are funded the same, you have equal opportunity. And that's what is, is now changing.
Certainly in jeopardy based on performance.
And it really has served us well through this Duke energy crisis. It really has. It, it just demonstrates why that's good, solid policy. Otherwise, we would be, we'd be a school system that would be at great disadvantage of other school systems because we happen to have a nuclear power plant that decides not to pay their taxes. It's no different from the school system that has a school district that has all kids that are, that, um, you know, have very high, Miami Dade, 50, 60 percent students that don't speak English is their first language. I mean, we all have our issues.
Right.
But we believe that equitable funding is what provides equal opportunity. And that's what we're, that's what we're really embracing. We are.
So, so back to the workshop. We've got a visit with Citrus Springs Middle School, Christopher High School, and then we'll come back and do the budget workshop. I believe there may have been a couple other items we'll have to discuss.
In January?
In January, yeah.
Does, is there any help to having our workshop, our budget workshop remotely, I mean, somewhere else? I mean, since it's a workshop? I mean, I'm just saying, does it, does it help us all rather than have to keep reassembling, or should we just come back here?
I hate dragging ourselves.
Okay, then we can, then that's fine. We could just come back here after lunch.
You just have to be able to provide space for people to come. It's a public meeting. You have to record it, you, you know, you have to.
So it just be easier probably to come back here after lunch and do it. Is that, can we do that? Can we get it accomplished in the morning and then come back after lunch?
Seven o'clock, sharp.
I'm okay. As Mr. Mullen says, many meetings should be before dawn or earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, appreciate it. Any motion to approve the minutes?
I need to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, second. Thank you, Ms. Powers. Okay, we're going to, it's 5:30.
Do you have to vote?
Oh, yeah, probably need to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass, it's 5-0. I haven't done this in a while, you know?
You're doing a great job.
Public hearing, 5:30.
Your first public hearing is Policy 7.33, petty cash funds. Go through this quickly. This item was presented to the, at the school board on October 23rd at the workshop. Basically, the only changes to 7.33 include the change of the term division to department and the statute citation changed. Just need a motion to approve the revisions.
Do we have any public input? Any public input? For the third time. Seeing none?
I move approval of the changes to, what is it, 7.1, Policy 7.33, petty cash funds, change funds, second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any comments? Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
The next one is Policy 6.1A, contracts, instructional and administrative personnel. And you can see the changes based on the change in statute regarding the probationary contract period. And I think John was here earlier, I don't know if he's, he wants to speak to this, but.
It's just the change with the probationary, it's a statutory.
I was gonna say, it's a statutory change from last.
Correct.
Do you want to ask the public?
Do we have any public input? Anybody from the public would like to comment on this? Going a third time. Seeing none?
I need to approve the Policy 6.1A, contracts, instructional and administrative personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, and Ms. Hale. Any comments? All those in favor? Aye. Carries 5-0.
Next one is revisions to Policy 2.70, prohibiting discrimination, including sexual and other forms of harassment. This one, we added some language to kind of beef up the policy language based on our consultant's recommendation, the addition of, of the language in, under subsection 3A, discrimination is defined. And basically, the other change was to include one point of contact for some unagreed employee who wants to file a complaint. It always goes to the human resources director. There's no question about where it goes.
Do we have any public input? Anybody wishing to comment? Third time. Seeing none?
I move approval of revision to Policy 2.70, prohibiting discrimination, including sexual and other forms of harassment.
A motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second.
I just have one question.
By Mr. Hale, Ms. Hale?
On page 1, 4, very bottom, it says, to all vendors or service providers who have access to the school facilities. And my question is, how is that enforced? Or how do you know?
Which one was it?
It's just a blanket statement, under B, on the right one.
On page 4, 4?
1, 4.
Oh, 1.
Okay. Or is it just a statement that, that, that was expected?
It means that.
What's expected?
Yes, we're not gonna discriminate if you're working under our supervision or if you're, and our service provider company.
Okay, we're, and this is, uh, it's not, okay, that's my other question.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries 5-0.
And finally, the last one is a new policy, 5.75, verification of high school diploma for admission to, with the Koochie Technical Institute post-secondary programs. Basically, I think Denise is here a few minutes to speak to this, but this is just to comply with federal requirements for federal financial aid to make sure that they have a high school diploma or equivalent.
Do we have any public input? Is there anybody who'd wish to comment on this?
Is there anybody who'd wish to comment on this? Third time. Okay.
I need to approve Policy 5.75 Verification of High School Diploma Revision to Wicca Tech Institute Post-Secondary Programs.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Hale. We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Hale. Do we have any comments?
I think Denise explained it very well the last time in detail, so I appreciate it.
Yes, you did. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Carries 5-0. We've closed the public hearing. And back to the regular meeting.
We just, uh, Mr. Mullen, about the announcement of those who gave stuff, donated, we didn't have a review back.
Oh, yes, we could. Ms. Burdleming?
The donations accepted on the consent agenda from finance were approval of a $550.30 donation to Citrus Springs Elementary School from Rotary Club of Central, Citrus Inc., a $750 donation to Forest Ridge Elementary School from Walmart Foundation, a $573.75 donation to Forest Ridge Elementary School from Coast Administrative Services, plus FHP Health Center at Brentwood, a $2,000 donation to La Canto High School from Bright House, a $10,000 donation to Woodcoochie Technical Institute from Joanne and E.C. Fithen, and a $28,000 donation to Woodcoochie Technical Institute from Black Diamond Foundation. That concludes the donations and the...
Thank you, Ms. Burdleming. Where should the, should this be in the budget update?
I think we just, when we pass consent, we usually follow it.
Ah, thank you.
But I think you did have it, though, on the agenda.
Did we also?
Yeah, you, you added it to the agenda where it was a line item, like after consent, where it was...
Right.
Yeah, no, but I mean, but I don't, it's not even on our agenda.
It is.
Isn't it?
Approval consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. That works.
Didn't see that yet.
No, I don't.
Haven't seen it yet. I think you were lying to me.
Right here at the bottom.
Yes, uh, number three, right? We just said, it's there.
Aha, got it. Thank you. Okay. Attorney Legal Matters.
Nothing. Do you want to show up any questions?
Ms. Powers? Excuse me, Mr. Mullen, do you have anything for us?
No, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Powers?
No, I just want to mention, one, Pat, I just thought you mentioned the shift. This is a seismic shift that she's talking about. I don't think I realized it until you started explaining that you take away the way that we've been funded. This is not a simple, uh, change letter A to B. This is a seismic shift, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Change in complete philosophy about what you believe about the state's obligation to fund public education and to provide equal funding for equal opportunity for every single student. That's really what we're talking about here. That's really what's being challenged, or being changed, being undermined, or whatever you want to call it.
Thank you.
Ms. Hale? Mr. Kennedy?
Well, you know, I'll never give up an opportunity.
I know. Go ahead.
Um, this is going to lead into Crystal River, but the first thing is, is I had an opportunity to be asked by Representative Smith to chair his task force on career and technical education. And we met here last month and had the opportunity to have Dr. James Stone, who is the Director of National Research for Technical and Career Education out of the University of Kentucky. And he's truly considered one of the leading experts in career and technical education. A group that does not believe education is a one-size-fits-all and believes that there should be multiple pathways. This happens because Representative Smith and I appreciate, appreciate tremendously that he, as I understand that, and this board has talked about, all kids are not necessarily going to go to college. But he, Representative, I mean, sorry, Dr. Stone shared something that I really wanted to share with this board, and that was that one of the things in their research, because that's what he's trying to do, is show the research, is that when students take the ACT test, that typically a score in mathematics of approximately 22 showed if a student was career-ready in mathematics, and skills-ready. The studies showed that if they took Algebra I and passed it, geometry and passed it, and Algebra II and passed it, only 13 percent of students in Florida and the nation would get a 22 on the ACT. And if they took trigonometry, trigonometry, thank you, that increased their chances up to 37 percent of those students. And so then what they did was they analyzed what skills would be needed to get a 22. And those skills can be taught, or are levels, or a level of geometry, of Algebra I and a tiny bit of geometry. They weren't even all of Algebra I. And so it begged the question, but it wasn't necessarily that you took those courses of Algebra II to be career-ready, uh, but rather it was the curriculum within those courses, the teacher in those courses, what a concept, um, and as well as the work that they did and that they learned. The other thing that I thought was really interesting that he shared was in the future labor force of Florida, that in a 2010 study, that they showed that in Florida's future labor market, that 47 percent of students, or, I'm sorry, 40 percent of those labor force would only need to have between some high school education, high school education and a technical degree. 47 percent. And yet, of course, as we know in our state, the criteria is, is that no, all students, 100 percent, will be going. So we talk about, you know, what that, what then it looks like, and how do we create multiple pathways? I, I am going to take an opportunity to say that Representative Smith had a bill that was at the time, House Bill 37, which basically was to say, it's time that we kind of get off the, you know, uh, stop talking about it, we need to start to do something about it. And unfortunately, Florida has never done a study even to understand the ramifications that this would have. And so Representative Smith's bill went to address that, but here's where I appreciate, we sat in a room and argued. I mean, we did it, and we did it respectfully. And actually, we had Dr. Connors there, was one of the people, we had Mr. Kelly, a retired La Canto teacher, I mean, La Canto principal. And the comment came is, it's not simply about creating an additional option maybe for high school graduation, but perhaps, what you talked about, Ms. Deutschman, and that is, that third grader option that we have at FSCA, the flexibility, maybe we need to provide options within there. And so after we left, I got a call from Representative Smith a little later, and basically, he said, he told his team to go back and rewrite the bill. And so to incorporate those concerns and those ideas that were taking place in that meeting, and from that, there's a new draft of that bill which took all those considerations and are being done. So I appreciate that, because that will be coming out. So a lot of that conversation went to, well, then what are we doing in Citrus County? So I, of course, had to, our next meeting that we're going to have, we're going to have it at the Health Academy in Crystal River, and to showcase what we're doing there. So Representative Smith is going to be in Tallahassee when that meeting takes place, so we're actually going to be doing it digitally. We're going to FaceTime him in. But I took him over there yesterday. Okay, I'm thrilled that I've rezoned in there, because you walk around, and I was not on this board. So I can't take credit, I get to just give you guys kudos. It is amazing, the thought, everywhere you go. I started out showing them the Health Academy and the things there, and I said, oh, you guys see the fish hatchery? So we went over the fish hatchery. And then it was, oh, I got to show you the business center. And so we take him in and show him the business labs, and then go, okay, so here's where they design the products, here's where they learn how to sell those products, and then here's the store that they sell those products at, and the store's there. And we said, let's take you over to the, the new audiovisual TV production room. And you walk in, and it's like walking into a newsroom. And I mean, we're not talking about just a, you know, a green painted wall, like, has been wonderful that you've done in, like, Central Ridge and some of the others. This is a production center. And we've had some talk with the, some local people that have been in and that are connected with some, uh, news media around the state, and they have actually been interested in those personalities coming up and actually helping us with, uh, providing opportunities for students there. But then you walk into this media center, and if there was ever a cathedral for learning, it was there, because you walk in and your voice goes down like you're in church, because you realize you're in a place where learning is taking place. So everywhere you walked, and Representative Smith's comment was, this is a model. This is what, this is what we're talking about. He said, there's other places that are trying, saying that this is what they want, that they, that they are going to do, but you guys are doing it. And we talked about the barriers of how do we offer more? You know, how do we get more, the fact that we only have five students right now from that welding center, we only have five, really nobody's benefiting from it, because we have challenges that we could address. And how can we bring that even more vocation, not just the health? And I know, I know I'm kind of talking to the choir, because I know that, that Superintendent and Mr. Mullen and this board has talked about, how do we bring more opportunities to the high school? There is not a best model for that happening, because the infrastructure had to take place, and this board saw the vision of what needs to happen for our students. I am so excited, because we've got challenges and legislation to address, but we have the tool there at Crystal River High for success of students in Citrus County. So as a parent, I cannot thank you enough, and I look forward to being able to just, wow. It's pretty amazing. So, um, that is all.
I guess Representative Smith will refer to the legislative...
Actually, I, I said to him, I know this may sound tough, but I said, I really think you need to bring the governor down here and take a look at, and show that maybe they need to be learning what we're doing in Citrus County and how we can do that elsewhere in the state.
What we did with our .25 mils, that we were allowed to...
That's true. There's no question, the .25 paid.
Paid for a lot of it.
Paid for a lot of that. But, you know, as you walk around there, and, and I will tell you, I took the apple, I had the apple representative today, was visiting Citrus County, and as I was showing him Citrus Springs Middle, I started talking about things going on at Crystal River High. Now, let's just go over there. So before this meeting, I ran quickly over to Crystal River High, and he, as he walked around, he goes, this, this is remarkable, because everywhere you walk on that campus, there was such thought put into how it would be used, and how it's going to be used. And, and it is just remarkable to see what you accomplish there. As a parent, thank you. And, and believe it or not, we'll shut.
Ms. Burdleming? I just want, you know, we didn't have a chance to talk about what we learned at the FSBA meeting in December, because we didn't have a workshop. And I know we want to talk about that maybe the next meeting, if we want to bring your individual notes from things that you attended, but I probably, you know, you walk away sometimes with one of these, oh, my goodness moments. And I attended both of the presentations put on by Mary Jane Tapping, who was with the Department of Education, and she talked about Common Core. And the second one, we talked about, um, what the expectations were going to be, and she said, they did not realize this until they looked at some of the testing requirements. But she said, within two years, fourth graders need to be completely proficient in word processing on the computer, because all of their writing exams will be on the computer. So she said, you need to get your kindergarteners started with keyboarding skills. She said, this is the one thing that we didn't, nobody thought about this, nobody anticipated the need for teaching keyboarding skills in kindergarten, first grade and second grade.
And there aren't these skills, even. I talked about that. They can't be these skills, they have to be true.
To get that ready, just to be able to take the test on the keyboard, and they have to also be very proficient in word processing and how you edit and, and create documents for grade. So she said, this is just kind of Florida, everybody knows, really good prepared for this. So, you know, everyone was like, we haven't talked about this either, I wouldn't have reacted, so...
And, you know, just going around the elementary schools, that's really where I think there's, you know, there's, there needs to be a serious conversation.
Yeah, I think this is like a SOS.
It's funded, it's true, too.
Yeah.
But we, we've got to make sure that, and they talked about, these aren't just going and playing a game on a computer skills, you know, a learning game or, or success maker and other tools that we have provided. It is truly about taking their thoughts and articulating them through the typed word.
Right. And editing.
And editing, cutting, pasting, all of those are skills that they were saying, those are skills that, and, and here's one that I was surprised, I don't know if you saw that, they said, like, for example, in math, you have to demonstrate, and, and Mr. Clark, I know we've talked, that in third grade and above, you'll have to type that demonstration out, but below that, you will need to use a digital form to draw that, or to, to, or to move an object around in the test in order to say, which would come first, this item or that item, and that the student would need to know how to do that. And those are, you know, those are very limited skills that...
And bringing that over, Chris's location, right? Four-year-old granddaughter, she's using my iPhone, she accessed my teacher list, so please tell Melissa the teachers, if they received a note from her, she's only had spelled them, so it's right on my computer.
I wasn't saying that.
That's funny.
I have a very special relationship with a first grader who got a mini iPad for Christmas, and so he was texting me, and I have a picture of him sitting in the backseat with his, with his iPad. But he said to me, and I was really impressed, because his words were perfectly spelled, he was using these big words, and this series helping me. So he was text to, always to text. And his mom was saying he was really, really struggling. He's been, you know, all these little babies were born with computers in their hands just about, but he was really struggling with typing, texting, and he's in the middle of first grade, and he's, you know, a pretty horrible kid. So the thought of having to be completely proficient by, by third grade, probably fourth grade certainly is a little daunting.
And she did mention, she, she gave us a lot of clarification on, you know, how many computers will be needed and, and that direction. And she, and she did talk about, because I believe, Dr. Getus, are we roughly three to four to one ratio?
Actually, I'm actually two something, between two and three to one.
Okay, because she talked about it, we would need to be closer to a two to one in order to accomplish some of those teaching things. But Dr. Getus, are you, in some of what we're talking about, we've talked about in that strategic plan, are those pieces that are, that you're talking about covering in that yet, or is that something, too, that we could, as we workshop?
No, we have talked about a number of those pieces. Honestly, we haven't talked about keyboarding skills at that, that level.
You know, this is the thing that everybody was saying in December, they said, how come we didn't know this? Even this lady who's very high up, and, and DOE said, she didn't know it. I mean, it's just now daunting our people, just now, so we've got a lot of work to do.
And, and I think what was interesting, too, is what you said, is imagine what California is going to deal with, where they don't have any computer access now, and they have to do the same thing in two years.
Didn't California opt out?
Did they?
I think, I think they opted out. No, I think they did. They do their own thing.
Maybe why?
California, they're, they're like another country. Okay, thank you, Ms. Deutschman. Got a couple things for you. On January the 19th at 2:00 PM, we've got the Harold's of Harmony are performing at Curtis Peterson Auditorium, and the total benefits, every penny you spend will go right back into Citrus County schools, public schools. The, the cost is $20 per person, and I have tickets. So if you would like a ticket, please send me. And then, on the 24th of January, is our Teacher of the Year.
Oh, I'm glad you told us that. We could have one that...
I don't know.
I would have got that one, too.
I made them. I, I think it starts at 5:30, and it's at the college this year.
Oh.
See? Aren't you glad I'm having this chat with you?
You know why? Well, I know why, because Citrus Springs, like, whatever you call it out there, they're now charging $800 to rent the hall, plus you have to buy insurance, plus you have to buy some other thing. I think it's got, maybe it's...
Remember, the last couple years has been Citrus Hills.
Well, that's true.
Citrus Hills, you are correct about what you just said.
And, and at Citrus Hills, it was kind of, if you were in that back room, you had a hard time seeing what was going on, and I think visibility will be great at the college. So hopefully, it'll be a lovely evening.
It's a Thursday night.
It's a Thursday night, and I think it starts at 6:00. It's a Thursday night, and I think it starts at 6:00.
Education Foundation.
I don't know. I don't know what happened. It probably starts at 6:00, but I'm putting down 5:30, okay? On the 24th. Yeah, I've got a meeting on the 17th, which is just one week late. I'll let them know. Was it $25? Is that how much it costs? Yeah, $25 for dinner that night.
$30.
Is it 30? Thank you. I'm glad somebody knows what I'm doing. And that's all I have. Ms. Simmel.
Good, good.
All right.
It was $20 for one ticket.
Thank you. All right. Anybody have anything else?
Public input.
Public input?
Oh, yeah. Public input at 6:00. Hmm? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. I'll give that to Paris.
Whoever needs to go.
Do you want, you want a ticket right now?
Oh, yeah.
Of course you do. I went last year, and it was quite lovely. The Herald's Harmony.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Do you have any citizens' comments?
All right. So while we're sitting here, Ms. Joseph, I have, I was going to tell you this. At June Educational Week, if you get their emails, there was a, I don't know if you haven't catched it, yesterday it came in, something about math education. So I went to it, and it was a link from a guy, I don't remember where he was, who was a teacher, working on his PhD, and he did a TED Talk. You know what TED Talks are? He did a TED Talks on teaching math to students, and he was using Algebra II as a lesson. It was really interesting.
Yeah, I saw that.
You did, okay. Yeah, good.
Always good.
Yeah. I was thinking, what can he tell people that we understand, but it was pretty interesting.
You know, a lot of the teachers are starting to try to do different things with their technology.
Yeah.
You know, like Mindy Molito, just today, she worked on something where she was videotaping herself through her phone, so that way she could give it to her students.
Oh, really, like a, like a book?
Emails.
Yeah, very cool, like a homework helper or something like that. Very cool.
And they could use that with students' raps, too, then. Exactly.
Okay, last call for public input. Our meeting is adjourned.